The United States went there and to the Republic, four states, one nation, under God, in this world, with the peace of justice.
Thank you. Right, first item on the agenda, seven point oh. Adoption and modification of agenda. I'd entertain a motion to adopt or modify the current agenda.
Like to make a motion to move ten point three superintendent update up to seven point two.
Second.
Let's go ahead and join me. We have that.
Like talking at graduation.
I have a motion and a second. Let's, let's discuss, is there any other items? That would, we would need to modify the agenda with besides seven point two? No. Okay. Karen, are we good with the modification?
Just got to vote.
Yep. Are we good for the vote? Okay. Please vote on the modified agenda.
Okay.
Just take a second to make the changes. So seven point two has been moved up in the agenda to and seven point two is superintendent update, so. Uh, Karen, can we go ahead and let Mark get started while you do that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. First of all, thank you guys for voting to move up. We have some people who I'm sure are interested in going out to the Powderpuff Game, which is beginning now. Um, so we wanted to take a moment and introduce those that were available for the second year. We have identified students in grades seven through twelve to participate in the superintendent's advisory council. The students selected are involved in a various and large variety of activities, are great advocates for their school, and one of the most important monthly topics that we engage in is what we call hot topics. And that's conversations where our middle school students and our high school students get to talk and collaborate about what information they want to take back to their building principals. And the expectation is after that meeting, they go back and meet with the building principals. And they take turns doing that, so they all have that turn of going back and engaging with their principal, and it's positive feedback, it's opportunities to maybe change or tweak things from a student perspective. There were several pieces last year that they suggested that we took action on. One, you will see this Friday during the parade about the communication we push out to our families. Once you're on a float, you stay on a float. We don't throw, we pass out candy, you walk in between floats. Those were all inputs from our superintendent's advisory council students. A very minor one, but was a very big deal for both our middle school and our high schools are some modifications in restrooms. Um, at the elementary school, they asked for, or the middle school, I apologize, they asked for an extension of the wall to separate the stalls and the restrooms, and at the high school, they asked for new flooring. We were able to get both those, I know the high school flooring is done. Are we done at the middle school as well?
Working on floats.
They're order, okay, they're ordered, we're almost ordered. But we're getting there, there were some modi- modifications done in the middle school locker room last year. One of the big things, just so you guys are aware, during the first week, it's challenge for OPA to know exactly how much food and how much à la carte items are needed, so that was feedback that our middle school and high school students gave. And we just really appreciate their input and they are a great resource if there are things that ever come up here and we want the student voice to to come, we always meet with them the Friday before the board meeting. Um, so I'd like to take this opportunity to invite our board to come up in front. And Randy, if you don't mind handing out the microphone, we would like each of our superintendent's advisory council students just to stand, introduce yourself, anyone that came with you. And then we would ask, once everyone's introduced themselves, to walk through and shake hands, and we will get a picture of you in front of the board.
Hi, I'm Molly Henigan, and uh, I'm involved in STUCO, FBLA, and DASLERS.
Hi, I'm DC Carlyle, I'm here with my mom and grandma. Um, I'm involved in cheerleading, student council, FCCLA, and DECA.
Um, hi, I'm Kate, I brought myself, and I do golf, basketball, soccer, and STUCO.
Hi, I'm Ava Nickel, I have my dad here with me, and I do cheerleading at the middle school in STUCO.
Hi, I'm Bronjman, and I brought my mom and dad, and I do football managing, basketball, baseball, and uh, STUCO, and then I'm also starting a program.
Um, my name is Brayden, I bought my mom, I'm in football, baseball, and STUCO.
Hello, my name is Dominic Santuli, um. I'm here by myself too, and um, I'm involved in a lot of different activities such as DECA, FBLA, theater, choir, um, superintendent's student advisory council, things like that.
Well, if you guys wouldn't mind even following up, if you will go through, if anyone's happy to stay up here.
I would ask the board, please just stay where you are. I would like to introduce, uh, Jess Stone, if you could come forward, Mr. Beck Gardner, and Mr. Michael Mas, please come forward. No, you might not. Come on forward, guys. We'll, we'll allow them an opportunity, if they want to say a few words, uh, we'll welcome them to. But these guys, we want to take time and introduce these guys to the board and our community, these, this is the face of security. These are the guys who are tasked with keeping our families and our kiddos safe, and we are excited to add two new additions with Matt and Jess, and everyone, Mike needs no introduction, he's been here doing this for quite a while, and we couldn't progress forward in a manner of safety that's vital for our community and kids without these guys, and we wanted to take the time to say thank you, introduce them, and if you guys have any words, please feel free.
Not really words per se, but thank you, uh, it's a great opportunity. Um, I was, I had a small exit from law enforcement for a while, and I kind of felt like it was kind of where I needed to be back in that, that first responder realm. That's, it's really where I felt comfortable. Um, the school was a new, new entity for me, watching over little ones. Uh, but it's really grown on me, they're, they're quite entertaining. Same. My, uh, my boss back here, uh, Dr. John can't test to that one. But no, for the most part, they're sweethearts, you know, uh, it's awesome to come in the building, they actually start to recognize you. They're, they're kind of gaining an understanding of why we're there, uh, which I think is pretty awesome. We even started to get a few parent requests, again, that are kind of seeing why we're there and in the building. Uh, and kind of asking us to do certain things for them, you know, to just kind of position in certain places during pickup, drop off, and things like that. Uh, even started bringing some complaints up to us, which is great, I think that they, they recognize that we're there and kind of what our role is. So again, thank you guys for bringing us into the school.
What'd you bring?
Nice to meet you.
Who'd you bring with you? Did you drive yourself?
Hello, always good to see you. Oh, darn it.
You guys quick sector. Thanks, buddy. Bye, guys, thank you. Thanks, brother. You guys are welcome to stay. Bye, guys. Right. Yeah, just a couple. Just a couple other pieces I wanted to share. Last January, and with some feedback from the last MSBA conference, fall conference, the idea was shifted for us to develop some community events. Last year, we did that through the color run. Followed that up with the K-12, um, district-wide art display that occurs every year in our pack. Um, this year, our first event was Friday at the community tailgate. We had great partnership um, with Southern Bank and Tally Farms, as well as Show Me Real Estate. We are so lucky to have so many tremendous partners. They, they assumed that they had, or guessed that they had about seven hundred and fifty people. Eat a hot dog, grab a t-shirt, um, so now we're happy to share this is our staff's second t-shirt, because Eric Craig also gives them one in partnership with the football team right after convocation every year and everyone that's there, so. We're just so lucky to have the tremendous partners we have, and we want to continue to do events like this. I wish Dom actually got to stay, Dominic Santia and Santuli, I apologize, got to stay, because he's actually one of our leads, and it's a good day Charlie Brown, which is our next community event. And the musical, I believe, is the, like, twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh. That October weekend, right in that weekend, I don't have those exact dates, but, um.
Twenty, yeah.
Thank you, twenty fourth, twenty fifth, and twenty sixth. We're gonna go out, publicize this, uh, make sure, head down to the senior center. We're gonna work with a couple different organizations, try to get some pre-tickets to get people in that may not necessarily either be able to come or used to coming, so really trying to think outside the box to engage those folks. Um, and then we will share with you guys the spring events, once we have more information on those, but I really believe that this has provided a great way for us to interact with the community. There were gonna be a bunch of people at the Carney Smithville game. We knew that. This just added a layer of communalness, talking. I know that Ian had to chase his football team off from playing football the entire game and back into the stands. And then we got to showcase our students, we had Color Guard, Dazzlers, Cheer, the band, our football team, it was youth football and cheer night. We had a ton of our students that we got to celebrate and really brag about, so very excited about that. Just one more reminder about the transportation facility, next Wednesday, we will have an open house from five thirty to seven thirty. We will have a ribbon cutting at six thirty. Please stop by if you can, it is a beautiful facility. And then we'll have some, um, some of our drivers, as well as their, their kids help cut the ribbon for us, so very very exciting. Anything you would add, Mr. Sexton?
No, just excited for the opportunity to showcase that space and all the hard work you guys put into moving that bomb initiative forward and making it a reality.
If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Any other questions? If not, on to the exciting eight point one. Public tax rate hearing and setting of tax levy. I'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and do a motion in a second, then we'll get to the discussion on this. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
You're good with it? So we got a motion from Broke, do we have a second? Yes, second. Okay.
Joe.
Joe. So, discussion of the public tax rate hearing and setting up tax levy.
Yeah, some high-level pieces each year, every other year is a true reassessment year, that was us last year. So this year, coming into it, we know we're looking at new personal property and then new other real property or real estate property that comes on the tax rolls. We did see an increase of our overall total assessed valuation from four hundred and, I think, three thousand to four hundred and sixteen, or sorry, four hundred and three million to four hundred and sixteen million. That represents a three point two increase district-wide. Last year, our increase was sixteen point six. So just as a variance between a reassessment year and a non-assessment year, we traditionally average about four to four and a half as a district. This year being a little bit lower, and that, that lower all came out of Clay County. Um, both Platte County and Clinton County were much higher, they were above eight and sixteen in each of those counties. Um, Clay County was just a little bit lower. We did have a large chunk of commercial property that moved from regular tax rolls over to the pilot payments, and that's the center of the meta-facility where the second building is going. Last year, that was on regular rolls, we will still get the same amount of money from that, but because it's a pilot one, or a chapter one hundred, we, that will not be part of our assessed valuation. So all of that building in the four hundred and forty million dollar building that's, we're hoping comes on very soon, it does not help our assessed valuation at all. Um, last year, our total levy was four dollars and seventy-five cents, and then four one thousands. This year, as we looked at redoing our levy, we were able to raise our fund ten levy. Um, that occurred because of our lower assessed valuation this year of just three point two four percent, that gave us the opportunity, Hancock actually worked for us. Where we were able to roll that up, we also shifted some cents out of fund forty into fund ten. That gives us more operating, we can always shift from fund ten or one to four, but gave us some more money in our operating levy, and we were able to maintain our levy of four seventy-five oh four, which is one of the things we wanted to do. We've rolled back our levy over forty-five cents over the last eight years. Um, from the Hancock, had the opportunity to roll up, wanted to keep it flat for our community, um, knowing that inflation has hit everyone. Be happy to answer any questions, there's a lot of details and a lot of wonderful forms that Karen and I learned how to fill out. She did most of the lifting. And want to thank Mike Reich here, who's from Raymond James, they help a lot of districts out, they, they were, he was very gracious with his time in helping us out, as well as Robert. We reached out to Robert several times, um, just to double and triple check all the work, and, um, it's it's a fun process, we're gonna forget about it for eleven months, to be honest. I think that's just what happens, but do want to thank Mike being here and, and being able to support us in that.
Yeah, I think the most important, uh, piece within that that you touched on, Mark, was you know, the, the economics of our society and the world we live in over the last seven years is it's evolved and changed a lot, and in many ways in the wrong direction for our constituents, and for us to be able to sit up here and say we rolled our levy back and that tax burden our constituents is really important to highlight that, um, unfortunately, a lot of taxing jurisdictions can't tell that same story because of economic impacts, but we're able to be up here and tell that story, and I think it's really important one to, to rest on.
And we're at four point seven five, but before the Hancock amendment adjustments over the last several years, we used to be at five point two. So, I mean, the fact that we're down at four point seven five is significant. Now, obviously, it's some, some areas of Hancock Amendment will work in another direction, but the fact that we've been able to, to to decrease it that much is, and still, still keep pushing forward is significant, so, I'd agree.
And just so you guys are aware, the three funds that are truly impacted by what we just discussed are ten, twenty, and forty. Thirty, although it's one of the series, truly stands alone and is used for general obligation debt. And we, we are required by law to levy enough money in that to ensure that we make all of our payments.
Really good information, so.
It's really exciting.
Very good report, so. Um, we have any other further discussion on this? Any other questions? Okay, great, so, please vote to accept, um, public tax rate and setting of the tax levy, please. Okay, motion passes. Next up, eight point two, resolution of intent to defeat.
And this, um, talks directly to the fund I was just talking about, fund three. There is a memo included in there for everyone that's looking, this is a very hard concept to understand. The best way I know how to explain it is we have excess funds in fund three. We in, I believe, twenty twenty-seven have the ability to match the excess funds we have in there and pay our general obligation debt from our two thousand seventeen bond. So again, everything lines up to general obligation bonds and paying that debt, we would be setting this money aside and dedicating that money to that bond and paying that as quickly as we can. Um, and the fu, the, the piece that we're a, available to pay, and I believe it's March first, twenty twenty-seven, so that's the right date. Um, the funds that we are over, it's able to match that, so setting these aside, we're able to be good stewards with our money, pay that um, debt as soon as possible, um, while maintaining any current bills and obligations we have for our general obligation debt. I'd be happy to answer any questions, regardless.
And fund three can only use for these, for this.
Yes. Cannot pay salaries, cannot build anything more without going out for another vote, it can only be to pay debt.
I, I would like to say that's, I appreciate everybody's work on, it's with Dr. Moss, Dr. Reich, and Karen, I do, because this is another good bit of a positive financial information for our district, to be able to start paying down our debt at a quicker rate is, is good, because, you know, people wonder that when we ask them for, uh, you know, when we go to the public for bond approval, right, and so you know, we are also headed down the road where we're gonna start paying off some of that debt quicker, which is a, a huge, significant positive step forward, so. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, motion carries. Nine point.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. All right, nine point oh, approval of the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items consist of committee workshop minutes for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Regular session minutes for August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, Board of Education workshop minutes for August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Bills for payment for September twenty twenty-four. Contractual agreement for KKBC, behavioral healthcare. Uh, contractual agreement for the family conservancy. Uh, district sponsors donations, spark hire agreement, and updated supplemental pay schedule. Do I have a motion to approve, approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion for consent agenda?
I will be abstaining from this, because my.
Ms. Carlyle will be abstaining. Okay, no further discussion, please vote. Okay, motion passes. Ten point one, comments from the audience. Ten point two, correspondence.
Yes, we did have a correspondence, and this correspondence is from Dana Bosley, she's a middle school teacher for us, she's been teaching us for well over twenty years. Uh, her mom had been, um, long-suffering with dementia and asked as part of people that wanted to donate to give money to that commitment, that is what we did. It was to the hospice house in honor of her mom, um, she was very appreciative, this is her, um, note to us. Um, I will share only because I know the, the family a little bit, my wife grew up with the family, they had over four hundred people at her visitation because they ran a funeral home similar to Hickson and Klein in Maryville, Missouri, and there were so many people, Dana said she was overwhelmed, her family was overwhelmed with how many people, and just came back and said thank you for taking care of us during our time of need, so we wanted to extend that to you as well, so she's very appreciative of the gift on, uh, that the board gave.
Okay, great. Ten point three, executive director of operations and safety, for Sexton.
Thank you. Randy, if you pull up the bond status update overview, so just start with construction real quick, this will probably be one of my shortest briefs to date for you. Um, we are at the majority of our projects substantial completion, which is a simple way of saying a lot of our work has been concluded, and we're running through just the minor tweaks and bumps that come with finalizing the project. The middle school track, um, we, we were able to find a solution and mix through the compounds, and that track is settling, we're still waiting for uh, the contractor to come back, get more water on it, and finish pressing and rolling it, so it's not finalized yet, but it's a lot closer than it's ever been, and we're hoping to have that concluded next week. Um, I wanna, I wanna kind of jump into, is, is there any questions around construction from your guys' standpoint as I move on?
While we're waiting for them to come back and repress that, is that, is it at risk?
No, so the, the feedback from the contractor, the table, kids are able to use the space as it is right now. Because the final touch-ups to remove the blemishes and finish packing, great question. Um, from a transportation perspective, I just wanted to give you guys a high-level overview. Um, you know, we are still in process of hiring drivers, we're about nine drivers still trying, we're trying to get in. Um, they had a hiring fair today, we're hoping that's fruitful, we had four in the hiring queue. Um, one who just started recently, and two that are in through training right now. That will, as we get local drivers established, I think that will further help us be consistent with our route structures and some of those timing sequences that we've been having challenges with. But I wanted to let you know that Durham is working really hard and finalizing that aspect of it. Um, I wanted just to thank Randy, uh, from a high level, he's been working diligently on identifying kind of critical life cycles for all hardware, so we can be more predictive in terms of our cost structure needs as we move forward. We'll have future information from the technology side and the critical maintenance side from assets for you guys to consider as we go forward as well, so we'll get a little more predictive from an analytical standpoint with that regard. Um, Dr. Moss and I were able to meet with Navitas just here recently to kind of really consider uh, what the planning outlook and overlay looks like with respects to critical mechanical, electrical, and plumbing infrastructure. HVAC is a heavy lift on that one, targeted with the high school, that's the biggest return on investment opportunity that was identified outside of weatherproofing our buildings and kind of some considerations around roofing. outside of weatherproofing our buildings and kind of some considerations around roofing. Uh as we further dive into that report and they're starting to put design at-risk considerations to that, they're going to bring numbers back in. Plus, some more detail to provide to you guys later. Any considerations around, questions around any of that?
Anything else you would want to include about Navitas as far as um roofing, even the lighting in the high school parking lot?
Yeah, absolutely. So they they have been great partners to kind of look at what's in place and to theorize what's alternative investment strategies that might maximize our returns. They've identified some of those aspects. Um you know, just considerations to how we do roofing and repair and seal our roofing versus a traditional method. Meaning, we can use our money to go much further and cover much more of our deferred maintenance than we thought possible. So they're helping enlighten us in terms those considerations, and I think it's going to be very advantageous for us to consider as we move forward.
And I know they talked about a system kind of work from the proactive side versus the reactive side on some of our HVAC and potentially adding those to two buildings that just got new HVAC in the middle school and um Horizon. Would you want to share any better details than what I could do regarding that?
Yeah, absolutely. They have a uh kind of an analytics control software that they're able to meter multi multi-points related to the electrical infrastructure feed all the way to how we supply cooling and the valves that we use for the chilled water. Because they can monitor all those points, they're they're able to run algorithms on predictive analytics that show us deviations in terms of consumptions and costs, which typically drive you to, hey, if we replace this and fix this over time, it will save us value. And so they have, they have a program that overlays on top of our control system software. So they were demoing some of that, and I think there's going to be some good conversation. I thank you, Dr. Moss. Thank you, Board.
Okay, and for only, uh eleven point one, general financial review.
Yeah, along with our general financial review, we have our preliminary ASBR. It's still preliminary because while Karen has submitted everything, we have not received feedback from the state. Um just so you're aware, on the ASBR process, it is an ongoing process. You can always go into versions. This is a public document across all schools in the state and see that there will be different versions. Some may get up to twenty or thirty. We hope to never get up that high. But but it is, and this is really a true report out of where we are at the end of last year. So in June, we shared several pieces of data. One of those was that we thought we would end up at about on the positive side of sixty seven thousand dollars in Fund Ten and Twenty, which informs our fund balance, our D I A A of twenty one to twenty six. We actually ended up at ninety three percent, which made our fund balance twenty two point four percent. Again, that's just funds ten and twenty. That is how all school districts across the state do. Um so very strong reserves. We're happy with the way we came in there. It speaks really to our building leaders. You know, when we submit a budget, we have plans and expect to to spend all of it. Our building leaders, our department heads are very responsible with our funds. Um I can tell you, I've worked in districts where that's not always true. So that's one of the pieces that really allows us to have um that ability to carry some over and in some ways count on that in the coming years. There are several pieces of information within there, but we did end up ninety three thousand dollars on the the good side of funds ten and twenty. With other school districts ASBRs coming out, we will begin working on that spreadsheet or the multiple spreadsheets we share in the finance committee that's shared with all of um all of the board updates within that, so you can start seeing the metrics and how we are tracking compared to the the six that we've identified, the five others that we've identified to be part of our six that includes a couple of St. Louis, as well as the others um within the area. There is also, if you want to look at the ASBR F Y twenty four analysis, you can see how some predictions versus where we ended up. Revenue, um expenditures, you're welcome to look at that, the top five, bottom five. Answer any questions uh that you guys would have on that. Um but it's it's very similar to what you uh received last year. One of the big positives I would say within there is if you look at employee insurance is towards the bottom. We have ended the year, the last two years, I believe, in the positive and had not had to make as many supplemental payments. We didn't have to make any last year, which is a big benefit to us, and Tim's hoping it's going to stay that.
Doubtful.
But it's probably not. They always come in waves, just so you know, is how it always is, every three to five years. But overall, healthy reserves, uh we're strong. Fiscally, we can trin- continue to try to be very diligent about how we spend our taxpayer dollars that come in to support our students while providing the best education we can.
Any other questions on general financial review? Again, pretty positive information. Um, all right, next up, board committees. Mr. Nichols?
Yes, uh by its name that last week. Most stuff we covered, we've already talked about. Um we went through the tax rate, just to make sure we understood and support that conversation. Um I think we covered that pretty well. And then uh just some brief comments on the ASBR report we talked about. I'd be ready today. Um the main focus there was us looking at our reserves and where we, that first where we thought. Obviously, still a very healthy situation there, even given the raises we went after. Then we talked about uh the potential bond and levy transfers as well, what that looks like. Uh quick update on where where they would be at for tonight, which we'll cover later on uh in new business. But uh, yeah, so we we kind of talked through that levy transfer to get a better understanding, to support that conversation with the board. What that campaign might look like, what uh the total transfer might look like, um and just making sure that um you know, as finance committee, we're comfortable with that and informed about it. So that was kind of the main highlights of, or me.
Uh and MSBA.
So they have released the annual conference um schedule for Friday and Saturday. Um there is also a cohort for cohort reunion for new board members on the seventeenth possibly. Um so I'm kind of just waiting to hear back more on that, but I signed for it. We'll see if they can get enough people to actually do with us. Um they did just print or release the um delegate handbook today. I haven't had a chance to go through all of it yet, uh but I'll probably send that out to everybody so you guys can see what we're going to be voting on at the delegate assembly, um like two days before it actually happens, but at least we'll know what we have going. At least that our pictures is input there. And then um the app that we will have launching October first, so you can see and navigate the event itself is pretty helpful. Uh but it'll update and you'll see the new stuff on first. And you can connect with people through the app that are at the assembly and their teachers and stuff, so.
Great. Anything else? All right, that's eleven point two, board committees. Eleven point three, under old business. And eleven point four, both of them are policy discussions and both of them are second of three readings. So first up is eleven point three, approve MSBA twenty twenty four B board policy updates for the second of three readings. Do I have a motion to approve MSBA twenty twenty four B? Got a, got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, do I, any discussion? On twenty twenty four B board policy updates.
I would just share that although it says revised on all three of these pieces, that's because it's revised from the current version. We have made no revisions to either of these two policies from the last meeting, and then also as we get to MSBA two thousand twenty four C, we have made no revisions from what MSBA provided uh earlier this month.
And so, yes, next month would be the the third and final reading on this, so. Um any other discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes, the third reading will be next month. Eleven point four, approve board policy KC for the second of three readings. Do I have a motion to approve board policy KC for the second of three readings?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Do we have any discussion on the second of three readings for board policy KC?
I don't, I don't want to discuss. I just want to make a comment. I still don't agree with eliminating some of those things. If we're having the language in there that says the plans are not limited but can be modified, I don't. It's just more optics that looks like we're removing things that the public perception is we shouldn't be removing. So that's just more of a comment. So um I I went back and looked through some policy to try to see if we had something in place that might make you feel a little bit more comfortable with us moving those types of things. Um because I agree, I like moving board meetings, like we do need to have them, we're going to have them, but taking it out of there might. But um, let's see here on, we have this po- policy B D A for board meetings specifically. And it's already adopted as of twenty ten, and it was last revised in twenty fourteen. Um and that actually talks about the the requirement for board meetings for us, so that would kind of maybe make you feel better about not removing that portion of the KC policy. Um and I also double-checked it against the MSBA policies in its word for word, so we didn't modify it from a Smithfield perspective. Um it just talks about like regular board meetings, special board meetings, and just says that we're going to have those. So maybe that makes it redundant, or you feel better about removing it from this particular policy. I don't, I don't.
I can see, I'm okay removing four A, like the coffee. Um because that's the only one that I specifically think we haven't been doing. We've been violating that policy by not doing what we committed to engage, but the rest of them, I'm I'm, I don't really think it's necessary to remove. And we we added the language that the plans are not limited but can be modified to toggle, but it's more optics, because even the public is like, why would you guys remove this? Why would you? I'm like, well, we're we're removing the language, but we can still do it, but it still doesn't look good.
So we want to remove regular board meetings. Our monthly board meetings will be held publicly and streamed to make meetings as accessible as possible, right? We want to remove that. The one that we already have adopted and was revised in twenty fourteen, matches MSBA, says regular board meetings. They shall hold regular board meetings throughout the year to transact business. The board will hold its regular meeting once per month at a time and place specified, and then it kind of talks about how we have to make sure it's available digitally, and we've promoted that, and then mo- public notice has been given, and it's also in a environment that can house everybody who wants to come. So I think that that policy.
This was more about community engagement plan, and so I don't think we've written on this well stated on here that that's a part of our engagement. I know that as a board that we are to attend meetings for the policy, but same policy KC is specific to community engagement. So I don't know that it's other than, I just think it looks bad to just take that off, even though we have a policy that says we're going to have meetings. There's no reason to remove it from here.
Board meetings are actually in this policy as well.
Yes.
FYI, um it's written communication, board meetings, and the community engagement plan. So board meetings are literally one paragraph above in this, this, in this community engagement policy.
In the whole policy, but whole policy, four minutes in paragraph right above the engagement plan.
And then the the other ones, like community newsletters, social media, strategic planning, curriculum nights, those are the other ones that you didn't want us to remove. I mean, those would be covered under like policy B B A, School Board Powers and Duties, which was adopted in two thousand ten, and this talks about legislative and policymaking. It's we're responsible for developing policies and rules and procedures to serve as guidelines for the general management of the district and our actions. Uh public relations, the board is responsible for providing adequate and direct means for keeping the district patrons informed about the schools and for keeping itself and the school staff informed about the needs and wishes of the public. And then it goes on to say that these may be construed, no, no policy, rules, or procedures may be construed to limit the statutory powers of the board to exercise so imprudent judgment. So I feel like that policy also covers the community engagement portion that the specific parts we want to move out while still keeping the basics intact.
You hear what you're saying. I'm just saying the B series directs us, this specific policy is our specific engagement with community. That's the purpose of the policy from MSBA when I called on and asked about it. So it's.
Did they not direct you to policy B B A, School Board?
The B series is our conduct and what we're doing. This series is more what our community is, community. So I'm just saying, when I've had people ask the optics is, it looks like we're eliminating these things, and I can direct them back to the B series, which regulates us, but I'm saying as an engagement with the with the community, I don't know, other than removing the coffee, I don't know why we want to remove these, because I I just think it's bad optics. And that is my opinion.
Right.
We're probably not going to agree, and that's okay. I'm just explaining why. I think there's no purpose in removing it, but.
I think, I I think like most of these items need to, like the policy itself is guiding us as we create create uh a community engagement plan. The the policy itself isn't the plan. The policy is the guide for making that plan. And so when you look at specific actions like regular board meetings, like coffee, in my opinion, those specific actions should fall in the actual plan, which should be derived from this guide, which would be a policy. So that's where I feel like it's not necessarily appropriate to have the specific actions within the policy, because policy would guide you in making a plan, which that plan would then be your actionable items like mini tailgate, coffee with the community, newsletter, social media. So it just seems, it definitely seems strange that when we went through this last year that we got, it it's almost like we put the plan in the policy as opposed to having two separate documents, which is traditional how it should be. You should have a policy in that plan, which would be the policy that would guide you in making it. So I just feel like it, by taking out a lot of the actionable items of a policy, it it allows us to have two very distinct documents that connect to each other. Just.
All very good comments uh from everybody. And thank you for pointing out some of the redundancy, and sometimes that's that's what we're doing. It's just cleaning up redundancy and.
I'm just trying to ho- hopefully make people feel more comfortable, like we're we're taking it out here, but it is still here.
Still policy.
Yeah.
So.
And it is good for the public to hear that, because I can only say to a couple of people, it's tough, but that helps clear up.
Right.
Thank you.
And I would definitely say like, from the community engagement standpoint, I I think everybody feels a lot better about the community engagement plan that we had come up with, with the fundraiser and the tailgate and everything else, because that seems to, and and the art show, the items that, you know, those events have been well attended. And um I I guess um having that flexibility to be able to do that is is um I think been a really good, positive thing for us. I think it's been improved our community. All right, uh so this is a reminder, this is just second and thr- three readings, so um next, next month we'll cover it again. So any other comments on this? If not, please vote. Okay, motion passes on to new, new business, twelve point one. MSBA policy twenty twenty four C for the first of three readings. Do we have a motion to approve MSBA twenty twenty four C bo- board policy updates for the first of three readings? Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. We have discussion on twenty twenty four C for the first of three readings.
The only thing I will share is in policy J F C L. We first got our eyes on this as a administrative team last Thursday, did not want to prevent it from coming to the group. But in J F C L, it is the A plus scholarship program. Under program goals, there are three numbered things with three bullets underneath them. Right now, Dr. McGinnis is working on to make sure those three bullets still represent where we want to go. This was last adopted in twenty twenty one. We will have more information. I can't imagine anything within there would go down. Last year, our graduation rate was ninety eight percent. This year, if we look at um fifty percent of our districts juniors and seniors enrolled in advanced courses, I think we're much closer to sixty. And we have more students, we have. And we have more students, we have almost as many students. Let me rephrase that, we have more enrollments in CTE, AP and dual credit courses than we have students in the building. So there are several students in multiple courses. I mean, then the post-secondary career technical score, high school wage job, that number three, we're just looking back at making sure that data still represents and the question I asked. Dr. McGinnis still looking to is what is post-secondary truly defined as? Because we don't want it so narrow that we're just talking about a two or four-year university, but what exactly is that? So we will have additional feedbacks, is there anything else you to add?
I don't think much to add, but to reinforce, we're exploring, including in the definition of post-secondary, dual credit, AP, NCC, NCAPS, internships. We do lots of things, so, uh, what in those things, uh, could directly align with the term post-secondary and how do we measure that?
Thanks, Mark, that was a question I had, so thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion? Okay, if no further discussion, please vote. Okay, next up, twelve point two personnel report. We have a motion to approve the personnel report.
Some of it. Second.
And I have a second. Susan, a second? Susan, one second. We have any discussion? Alright, Ms. Carlyle will abstain, no further discussion, please vote. Okay, motion passes, next up, twelve point three. Toss it over to Dr. Moss here in a second and Mr. Saxton, uh, evaluating future bond projects, um. This was at the request of the school board for administration to kind of go back and see where we're at, uh, and compare, uh. What we've been doing from our master plan, tenure plan, uh, recalibrate, just like we did on the last bond issue. Uh, just kind of, uh, recalibrate where we're at as a school district and do a needs assessment across the entire district and kind of see where we're at and, uh. We don't know when we're gonna go forward with this, it's still open for discussion, but it's, it's a discussion right now, so I will turn this over to Dr. Moss.
Yeah, I would just says, Randy, would you please project the twenty five, twenty six bond project lists? We just put it as twenty five just because it's. The next potential and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Saxton to share the rest and how these came about, I do want to thank our building leaders. Uh, Mr. Saxton, Mr. Bogart, coming in and really digging into this work to understand where our district was at with different things as well as. We have two new leaders, two of our buildings this year, so we were able to fill in a little bit of what we had heard previously as well as get some fresh eyes in those buildings. To inform this list, so thank you all building leaders, thank Mr. Saxton and I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the grace, uh, you know, two months in, you close out eighteen million dollars worth of work and then you start putting considerations together on. What the future might look like, and I could not have done that without the group of people sitting across from me. From a high level, trying to theorize what it could be, so I appreciate you guys, couldn't have done it without you and the opportunity for me just to learn and spend time with you. And all my counterparts from the IT and maintenance perspective, but. We, we tried to kind of work and we rounded in each building and took a look at our master plan, what our, what our past bond project initiatives were and we tried to start. Painting a picture of conceivable ideas and that started and then out of that you started seeing some emerging themes and that what you guys have in front of you are what some of those emerging themes are. So you can kind of see the structured layout of it, you know, the project area impact, kind of the info source and where we derive that theme. Uh, kind of what that project outline looks like, and then I tried to kind of give you guys a somewhat of a scope theory that would help you start to target in on what those conversations really looked like. And you can see, you know, you, we quickly touched the elementaries from a playground perspective. Horizon gets, you know, a, an upgrade from the restroom sinks perspective, and then we start to really invest money and considerations into the middle school and high school. And if you look historically about where the capital investments have been, you know, there's been a heavy lift in the elementary's primaries and then. You can really start to see the emerging theme of that money shift starting to go to the middle school and high school, so as you scroll down that list, you're gonna see a lot of that. Uh, Todd, please don't, please don't be worried, there's a, there's a section in the middle school where it outlines a lot of, a lot of those considerations you and I discussed, everything from. Flooring, restrooms, locker room, gym speaker, a library and I got your whiteboards, the whiteboards are in there. Uh, but those considerations and, you know, I appreciate our cabinet team and our internal team helping me scrub this. We spent some considerable time on just trying to get this in a working shape for its first draft or your guys' perspective, but. I would welcome you to, you know, take time, understand, you know, what's on here and then I welcome any questions if you have.
It's really clear information, I really appreciated how it was laid out and I mean, knowing how quickly you moved on this, like.
I gotta give credit to, so I'm an Excel guy, so for me it was all in Excel. Mindy is the masterpiece behind making it look much better, I would have just gave it to you in Excel, sorry.
Well, it looks great and it was super easy to follow and see exactly what we're talking about, so thank you.
So from the aspect of bonds, we've now done the, uh, legwork to understand what our. Capacity would be from the financial side. We've got a list of opportunities now from the actual facility side, so the next step be trying to match this list up with. The financial opportunities and distill this out to see, you know, of this list, um, what our opportunities would be, is that kind of the next step?
Absolutely, this list is well beyond our body capacity, um, on purpose, it's meant to be that way, need to present it that way to let. People do, it's also not meant to be comprehensive, if there are other pieces you would want us to consider. That you have heard, we've tried to be as inclusive as possible of what was that ten-year master plan? What they heard as a, as a board member, as an administrative team during the last bond projects. As well as just that idea of what's the last thing that's been touched in each of our buildings, uh, to complete this list can certainly add. Pieces within there as well, but then the next piece would be is trying to put some very high level dollar amounts to this, uh, for consideration. And it, you know, we would have roughly about twenty million this April, about twenty-five million the next April in twenty twenty-six. Um, this list is still well beyond either of those amounts, but it gives us an idea to start with, that then we can go start engaging with our community, engaging with. Um, different stakeholder groups to really narrow that down and identify what is the most important for us if we were to go out. In April, I would also want to share that with the defense, with anything we did with the tax levy. We could still do a thirty per, thirty cent levy transfer in April, go out for this bond and pay all of our debt. Without any issues moving forward, it would, it would not increase our levy at all. From the forty-seven, five oh four that, that you guys approved earlier tonight. It would not. The levy transfer and any bond would not increase our levy or tax obligation to the school district. For us to go out and do these, these projects if the voters approved it.
And, and what we're looking at, just for further clarification, is a levy transfer more funds into operations, so into our schools for staff and students. So, looking at both of those options, uh, uh, going out to a no tax increase bond issue. And shifting, uh, more funds over to operations, so that is under consideration for April, so.
And Ian, the biggest why this is for deferred maintenance, correct, is to prevent.
So a lot of, a lot of these are capital initiatives, so my intent, what I owe you guys, target around February is the deferred piece. A really holistic forecast and historically how I've handled that from prior organizations is that I've worked intimately with the CFO. And developed an operational spending plan within that structure, so we can start targeting that. So what I owe you guys is really in-depth structure of what that means and how it will enrich our operational budget going into next year. And then to also make Dr. Moss aware where our shortcomings might be, so then as we look at future capital expenditures that maybe we have to start tagging some of it in that, in that fashion.
Just where you're coming from, over the years, Ian being on the board, this is something we've wanted to happen for a long time, is to get a deferred. Plan so that we do know, because for so long the district sort of depended on high bonds. To do bonds for these big things, to do bonds for HVAC and all of this stuff, and now we're wanting to see. How much can we put into deferred maintenance and how much do we need to do here, so I agree, and, um, other thing is, is. Can you guys come up with a timeline and let everybody know? Um, when things have to be done in order for an April, um, levy and stuff, um, you know, a lot of the board hasn't been through that. And there are certain timelines due to state statutes, you have to have the wording in for the bonding by this time. I just want to make sure that everything is feasible for us to do and that. I worry about the work that everybody has to do, so I'm not saying I do not want to do it whatsoever, I'm just wanting us to be realistic about. Uh, the bond especially, the levy one transferring, I think that's an awesome, you know, awesome issue, just.
And there's a little bit of time sensitivity with the levy transfer being twenty twenty-seven, so that's why we're looking at twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-five, so we can do that ahead of time.
Totally understand that, yes, thank you.
But I think maybe like a Friday update, having like a, a preliminary timeline, so that would be fantastic. Um, and something else that's being discussed and, and thank you, it's not meant to be a comprehensive list. Because we really can do as much as we could possibly want to do, right? Uh, but we see that when we, we've taken our walkthroughs. Uh, I think administration is also looking at a more comprehensive plan and a more comprehensive discussion, so even though the discussion, if we went forward on twenty twenty-five. It would take place this fall, I don't think the discussion would stop because I think Dr. Moss is, is looking at, uh. Further, bigger picture, uh, of projects and, and how we do our bonds going forward, again, we have made a big step forward with trying to defuse a bond. Right, trying to pay that off early, so we are, you know, we're shifting from, you know, making sure our operations are going to students and teachers, now this is just another, next evolution of. Pretty exciting stuff, this capital improvement.
Oh, I love what I'm seeing, I, I totally, that's a good way to explain it, I agree.
So, I, 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 I guess if you guys have items to add to this list and have more conversation around, I would just say I think Eagles, uh, Eagle Heights, their, uh. Their own playground might be a little too small. But, uh. That's why I commented about Eagle Heights, but. You can move it to the left there a little bit.
It is nice to see this, this list match up with our goals and priorities and the fact that. It does, for the first time, allow us to focus our bond expenditures on capital improvements as opposed to maintenance items, so. It's, it's good to see that and as you touched on, we'll have a deferred maintenance opportunities there that we would go after in a more traditional capacity.
Yep.
Of, uh, operational funds as opposed to.
That's my.
Yeah, I'm, this is exciting, uh, you know, we've been able to give the two largest increases in staff pay in district history with plans setting us up. To continue on with that, hopefully, um, and then these projects, um, very exciting time in our district. I, um, was just thinking conversations that I've had since we're adding to the list potentially, um. Track throwing, um, lots for that, I don't know the right, I'm not a track.
You'd track. Gabbling, comprehensive kind of facility.
I know that that has been brought up to me.
I think some of that is gonna be determined softball, baseball complexes.
Yeah.
How we do that, I guess.
We can certainly look at.
Yeah, get it on the list.
What the cost of something like that would look like, yeah.
It's a, uh, middle school track. Probably we need to include that on middle school stuff. And just, I, I, I see and thank you very much for putting, um, ADA compliance in here, that's good to see that. Emergencies, and Ian, when you're thinking about these improvements, emergency services, access to some of these activity fields. Making sure that it's, uh, quick and easy, does that make sense?
Yep, understood.
Just in case, you know, there, there's always gonna be an accident, you know, and we just want to make sure that emergency services.
Yeah, sure, we have payroll to get in here, that's very close to the location, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so one we're considering, just make sure.
I think a good thing, so the, the public and everybody else knows is there is a variety of stuff on here, there's not just athletics, there's classrooms. Um, there's campus, there's, you, uh, all kinds of stuff.
Is a big one, that's really.
Yes, I think, I, I just like it because it's a, it's a really good overall, uh, update of the whole district and I think that's so important, I think that shows that. Everybody's looking at the whole, the whole picture, I think it sums up the whole picture, yeah.
And this also leads us that, you know, a couple of years down the road, and, and some of this stuff. We, we may be going down a path where we're not just funding it with bond funds, we, we, we might be able to access other funds. And utilize other funds to fund some of this stuff, so that'll be something new for our school district too, so. It, it's a comprehensive, not a comprehensive list, but it is, it's exciting, I think it's. It, it's, I like this, I like this needs assessment, I really do like the, how you guys put this together, so.
And Joe, you mentioned kind of deferred maintenance, I will tell you, my wife, when I, she looked at our bathroom in our previous house would have called it deferred maintenance. Updated, we, we just have different verbiage where sometimes we may call things different, but like our updates and bathrooms and those things have been needed for a long time. And just have not ever risen to that top, so, um, while not everyone calls them deferred maintenance, I can tell you our young ladies that have flooring in the high school bathroom on the academic side. They would have considered that ten years too late. And it's still not where they want it to be, so, uh, absolutely, we're able to put some things on there that we haven't been able to previously that we've known has been a big for our buildings.
And maybe the deferred maintenance would be so much that it would just move into a complete upgrade.
Yes, yes, it's a complete upgrade.
Is there anything else that lovely principals here, anything that? Isn't on the block? Did you, were you guys able to like tell him your priorities as a building, what, what is most important to you? I would be interested.
I got, so we have all of their notes, um, and not all of their key priorities made the hit list, right? But they are on a list and so my considerations are what's falls in the realm of deferred versus a large enough volume of capital considerations. And that's how I tried to structure that, you know, when we look at considerations around, um, aesthetics, paint, flooring. And a replacement cycle plan, that could easily be as much deferred maintenance intentional planning as it could be, don't touch it over ten years and make it a capital project. I would argue that I want to get on a rotational plan where we paint consistently, we look at flooring consistently. Todd has done this, you know, inherently through his own, you know, will, we ever walked the middle school, his considerations to ensure that they have a, a rotational plan around paint and stuff like that. We need to, we need to adopt that and further that out, but that's an operational opportunity to align how we do things and. Those are the, you know, two months in, those are some of the big considerations that, you know, in conversations with Dr. Moss, I think we have great opportunities towards and I just need to further have time to vet it out, get it ready. But we have all of those, I could, I happily share all of them, it's in Excel format.
Well, and the, those are examples of like, we may be going down a path where we can fund that operationally instead of just waiting for a bond, so. Uh, being able to have that feedback and you guys to be able to work together is a big step and, you know. Maybe, maybe, uh, this will be endless, right? Right, Mr. Winterboard? I'm sure you have some, some words over there.
Already.
The more human, the outside, the outside, um, it's nice to have, I mean, it's got to be that.
You can speed your timeline up with bribes and coffee. I couldn't pass the opportunity.
And just so, yeah, the public knows, the whole board, we all went to the high school, toured there, talked about a lot of green over there, yeah, big project, so.
And, and as Ms. Whitaker pointed out, like the investment in upgrading some of the classrooms over there would, would be a very exciting opportunity for our high school and just for our students in general, so.
Like what you said, uh, Ian, about how you have regular like painting and stuff that you're updating your buildings with and that maybe that can be expanded across all of them. It's not considered so much a upgrade as just standard.
Make it a part of your operating.
Yeah, I think I like that. And surely there's a lot more that we could include in that.
Scott Bogart is getting nervous.
I'm excited, I'm excited for all the change and the opportunity that we have here in front of us, so. Okay, uh, I don't think this is an action item, but this is going to be an ongoing item. And uh, I think Dr. Moss will get out uh, some information on that Friday update.
So timeline was one. Um, we'll give a fairly comprehensive one, probably won't be this Friday, but the Friday after, it's with homecoming week. And then additions, um, potential expansion of the Eagle Playground. I heard a track throwing facility area, loose and then middle school track. Is there anything else within there?
Just saw the master plan had mentioned a cooperative learning spaces too. I don't know, that's under consideration for like middle school, high school, stuff like that, so I don't know.
Maybe that's like where we're removing, removing the um, lockers and adding space for.
What are we talking about outside? Like outside the high school courtyard back. Outside space, get those kids some outside time.
We'll call it a cafeteria courtyard. Yeah. That's the space you talked about, correct?
Which we talked about, but yeah, I don't think it's on this.
Great. Okay, and hopefully this is just ongoing conversation for quite some time here, so. Alright, uh, that was twelve point three. Next item.
Would it be worth mentioning?
Go ahead. Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, good, good point.
Yeah, on it, um, with, it is homecoming week. Today at central office was opening ceremony, so we all wore blazers. Or in sport coats today. We have, we're trying to dress up the same. We didn't think, feel like we could get rid of P, where we could do PJ day on Monday, and so instead we got, we got buttons of PJ and wore them around. Definitely zombie-free that day, thank goodness. Uh, and so we're, we have dress-up days. Of course, Friday is the big green day. It is early release on Friday. The parade will start promptly at two o'clock. It starts here in the high school, middle school, all the way to Horizon's parking lot. It will go downtown. It will finish up at Heritage Park. Several of those floats will come directly back, but that starts at two o'clock. It's always a great time. We will, we've worked so that way our high school students can get to the pep rally as quickly and safely as possible. So they're not going to go to Heritage, Heritage Park. They're going to go by the old fire station. It's also Heritage Park Parking Overflow that they'll be stopping at, and that way they can come back to the pep rally at the courtyard. So looking forward to it. It's going to be a great event. And it looks like we're all going to be feeling what ninety-two feels like, yeah. But we'll make. Better, better than rain, better than lightning. And then that evening, we take on Oak Park High School.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Do I have a motion? Uh, anything else? Sorry. Well, good. That's a good point. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm a second.
We got a motion and a second. Please vote. Thank you, guys. And counter puff might still be going over.
There's a lot of celebrating early. Seniors won.
Oh, it's over, okay.
By a lot. Little was it close? So close.
Good job, guys. That was a really good discussion and we're done.